Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. Declare Quorum, please stand, join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I need a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd, 2022. So move. Motion second. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, communications and petitions, citizens in which be heard and matters not listed on the agenda. We'll start with Mr. Lindelof, sorry, Tom.
Good evening. My name is Tom Lindelof. I live at 380 Crestwood Road. I'm the president of the Woodside Homeowners Association, representing eighty-five homeowners, many of whom are here tonight. If you guys want to raise your hands if you're from Woodside, might explain the big turnout tonight. I've got some comments I'd like to make. Honorable City Council and Mayor Police, thank you very much for the opportunity to address this body. Is that coming from me? Is that static? At the 2021 Annual Meeting of the Woodside Homeowners Association, the residents expressed overwhelming support for the idea of closing Second Avenue at Spruce.
We'll give you a different microphone, Tom.
Okay. There were several reasons for this support, and I'll name a few. Number one, Second Avenue is about the length of a football field between Route 83 and Spruce, and it's about a mile to the entrance of 290. It's a criminal's getaway dream route. I would encourage you to go see for yourself if you have not already done so. Number two, the proximity to this getaway route has already led to home invasions, automobile break-ins, and outright theft in our neighborhood. I'm sure this was never taken into consideration when this kind of stuff, I'm sure this was never taken into consideration when this property was annexed thirty-two years ago. Why would it have been? This kind of stuff was rare in the suburbs. But times have changed, and it's time for a change at this street. And number three, we have seen a significant increase in high-speed cut-through traffic trying to avoid the light at Third Avenue. Again, when the city annexed this property, the plan was to develop an upscale neighborhood, and sidewalks were not part of the plan. Consequently, we have foot traffic on our streets day and night. And someday, someone is going to get seriously hurt, or worse yet, killed. Number four, closing Second Avenue will create an inconvenience for several of our residents. But by signing the petition almost eighteen months ago, they've made it very clear that they're willing to take the extra time for the protection and safety of our community. And finally, number five, we all know the development of Route 83 is going to continue south, up to and including the corner of Route 83 and Third. And we know you can't stop development, but you can plan to minimize impact on your neighborhoods. These threats are real, they're happening now, and will only get worse as this development continues. Now, I've read the request for committee action that was submitted June 9th by the Director of Public Works, and I paid particular interest to the statements from the impacted agencies, police and fire departments with regard to response times, school districts and busing concerns, and Addison Township regarding garbage and snow removal. We certainly have respects, respect for the four residents on Second Avenue. But they are, after all, residents of Bensonville, not Wooddale. Of the four homes, one of the four homes has been there since 1957, another one since 1943, and a third since 1934, long before cell phones, central dispatch centers, traffic signals controlled by EMS vehicles, and garbage trucks that picked up trash with one-man crews. Somehow, they survive for decades without the existence of Second Avenue and the Woodside subdivision. Now, our subdivision is somewhat unique to Wooddale in that we're kind of a horseshoe design. We don't really have any east-west or north-south streets. In Ward Four, however, there are eleven east-west streets that intersect Spruce between Fox, between Foster and Irving Park Road. Nine of those eleven streets are dead-ended at Route 83. That's right, nine of them. None of them have a cul-de-sac, or a hammerhead, or any other accommodations for turnarounds. Somehow, the kids get to school, they get to snowplowed, and the garbage gets picked up. Last Thursday, this council showed complete disrespect and lack of empathy for our residents. Our elected officials, Alderman Messina and Jacob, simply asked to table the conversation so that our Board of Directors and residents had time to review and comment on the options provided by your consultant. After all, we asked for this project in the first place. I'm still puzzled as to why Mayor Police didn't offer any commentary to the council to allow a little more time. The idea of not letting our residents have an opportunity to be heard is completely contrary to our form of government. Every day in the news, we hear about threats to our democracy. I believe democracy starts at the local level. And even though individual wards elect their aldermen, ultimately, you represent the entire city. I've been here for thirty years, and I've seen great progress made around this city with multimillion-dollar projects and small-scale projects and everything in between. This is a small-scale project. And after two years of discussions, feasibility studies, and sunk costs, why couldn't you wait another week to hear from the residents that you represent? It would have cost you nothing to table it for a week or two. I'm here to respectfully request that council reconsider their decision last week to kill the project and allow your citizens to be heard. There are two-hundred-plus residents and over forty children that would be protected by this simple, low-cost safety measure. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next, Matt Curvin.
Thank you very much. Tom, thank you very much for your prepared statement there. It covered virtually everything I wanted to talk about here today, so I won't echo too much on what Tom had said. I'll just speak kind of to how this relates specifically to our family. My name's Matt Curvin. I live at 405 Woodside Drive with my wife, Costantina Capriati Curvin, our four-year-old daughter, and our two-year-old son. And we specifically chose this neighborhood for many of the reasons that my neighbors have chosen this as well. It appeared to be safe, and it's a nice neighborhood, it was annexed out, it has wonderful residents that we've become a nice little community into. And we've seen over the last few years an increase of the crime that Tom has talked about, and it's starting to become a little worrisome regarding those with families and some of our older residents here, the people that it's our job to protect locally here. And we're not asking you today, we understand that this is, this is a cost, and it is a cost that we're not paying for, it's a cost that we're hoping that you will take the time to think about a little more clearly and allow us an opportunity to maybe put a presentation together. So we're not asking you for any kind of money or anything today. We are asking you to consider this and give us an opportunity, one by one, to tell you why you think you should do this. So thank you for my time today, thank you for our time today, and I'll hand it off to the next person.
Thank you. Mike Lehman.
Thanks, Matt. Mike Lehman, I live at 396 Woodside. The traffic on the streets of pedestrian and children has increased quite a bit with the COVID lockdowns and everything else, the economy right now. I see that actually increasing. The amount of traffic that is coming off of 83 and through our subdivision has increased as well. Just alone in our subdivision, just this past six months, we've had three concrete mailboxes knocked down by people who are cutting through this subdivision. As an emergency room physician who's worked at a trauma center, if that was an individual, that would have been death. They would not have survived. I would appreciate if you people would take the time and consider our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Arnie Schmidt.
I'm a dinosaur. I'm Arnie Schmidt. I live at 400 Crestwood Court. My mailboxes are the ones that he's talking about. The thing that is upsetting, though, it's kind of humorous, I guess, to some people because their mailbox has been hit. But shortly before that, my niece was standing by the mailbox, and I had just come in with the dog. Had we been standing there, you never would have had a chance. I think the thing that really pissed me off the most was this Latino wasn't supposed to be driving a car, had no insurance, and then the police tried to protect her, but not given her a ticket. That's very wrong. I have a CDL. I leave a scene of an accident, I get a ticket, go to the Grey Bar Motel. This girl got nothing, not even a slap on the wrist. Now, we all have animals, or a lot of us have animals. It's getting after dark, harder and harder to walk just because of all this. I think there's some simple solutions. I guess I'm a little wondering how Second Street got tied into our subdivision initially because I read Tom's note about, in fact, many years ago, it wasn't part of the village. So that's about it.
Thank you. We do have some other letters that the manager will pass out to the council, distribute. That came from the subdivision. Also have Mr. Reed Goodrich.
Yeah, hi, my name is Reed Goodrich. I live in the Royal Oaks subdivision. And I'm here to speak against the Fenton referendum. Fenton's been on a marketing blitz recently led by their superintendent, but there are a few things you're not being told. So let's talk about the money. I attended the May 16th open house and asked a few questions. The one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-point-seven-million number that they're asking for was a result of a poll to gauge how much money Fenton could obtain on the referendum. This is not a result of quotes or qualified estimates to create a realistic budget that the rest of us, if we were, you know, adding to our homes or doing other projects, would do. The consultant then filled in the dollars to go along with the expense categories after they decided on a total. Fenton has twenty million dollars of unrestricted cash in the bank that they refused to apply to the construction cost, and so lowered the bond request. There's no assurances that any excess bond funds will be used to pay down the bond debt and reduce the cost to the taxpayer. I asked where the remainder of the money would go and received no answer. The consultant later said that ninety percent of the people don't understand the real estate taxes, so implied this will get by the voters. If you haven't already done so, I encourage everyone to take a close look line by line at their taxes. Should this pass, and a house assessed at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will increase four-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a year, and this will be for twenty-five years. A three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, a house valued at three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will go up five-hundred-and-fifty a year additional on top of whatever you're paying now. And if your home was worth four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, your taxes will increase eight-hundred dollars a year. And this is right off the website that Fenton provided, so you can calculate this. Unfortunately, I'm not able to put it up here, but I understand some people have taken my flyer and put it up on the Wooddale Community Facebook page. I don't do Facebook. For those that do, you can find more, you can find information there. I do not believe this referendum is in the best interest of the Wooddale taxpayers. Okay? So I encourage you to, please discuss this with your neighbors, pass the word. And for those who thought about sitting out the primary election, I encourage you to go and vote no, because the forces behind this referendum will have their people out at the polls voting for this thing. And I can, and I've seen it before in an off-year, off-year election like this, where as little as twelve percent of the electorate has turned, has turned to vote on an issue like this and passed a bond issue. So I encourage everybody to vote no to financial waste and vote no to the Fenton referendum.
Thank you. Any other citizens who should be heard? That's all the postcards I have.
From Mayor. Are you going to read any of the twelve letters you got?
No. It's the same thing.
Not the same thing, but read the one in the envelope. That's completely...
All right, next. Got a letter here from the Manjanello family saying their thank you to the City Council for the red, white, and blue banner of their husband. They like, they love driving down Irving Park and say, hey, Dad, it's up to you, it's us. Make us proud. Okay. Next, Mayor's report. We have a veteran's banner, retirement. So we got a retirement banner from Mr. Ray Labuda. We want to thank him for his service. We have a certificate here for Mr. Labuda. He chose not to come in, so we will mail him his banner.
Can we allow these folks to, since they wasted twenty minutes, to at least go?
Yes. Okay, so Mr. Labuda was in the U.S. Navy from sixty-six through sixty-nine Taiwan Patrol. We thank Mr. Labuda for his service. Janelle, make sure he gets it. Next, we have Wooddale Food Pantry.
Come on down. Where's Mark and Sue?
They got their granddaughter, Richard.
Of all times.
Oh, it's not working. So this is for the Wooddale Food Pantry. It's a five-thousand-dollar check for all the hard work that you guys provide to the community. We thank you very much. If you'd like to, like to say something, go ahead.
You know, it's very humbling, and I am so grateful that the city of Wooddale invests into the food pantry. We've been in business, if you will, for one year now, and we've served, we've had about twenty-seven-hundred family visits, and we serve about one-hundred families per week. And this donation, this investment, will go a long, long way and will feed so many people. And I just can't thank you enough for being so gracious.
Again, thank you for your service at the community.
Mark, Sue, and the grandbaby. Get them up there, please. They were changed babies. Where's Mark?
Does he want to speak too, or?
We have grandbabies, Don, you'll understand. We'll time out when they call them.
All right, who's Kathy over here? Kathy Facey! Aw, very nice. Thank you.
Good job, Wooddale Food Pantry. Long live the Red Door.
Thank you, everybody. I mean it. Thank you so much.
God bless you.
Okay, next, one other item that just came up. We received a quote for weather insurance yesterday that we need to have in place for the commencement of Prairie Fest on July 28th. We do not have a council meeting prior to the expiration of the quote. We are asking for the board consensus now, and the item will be placed on the next council agenda for ratification. The quote for four days of weather insurance is thirteen thousand twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, there's no motion because it's not, it's not on the agenda, but we don't have count. Right, no committee next week and no council because of the holidays, so by the time, we need to sign this contract before, so I want to basically give a, if we have a consensus, if somebody, unless somebody has objections, then the manager will not sign. Okay. It'll be on the next agenda. Next, City Manager Report.
Thank you. I have two items. First item, I'll defer to Chief Vesta.
Thanks. We'll give everyone a second to come in. So thanks, Mr. Manager. So typically, at the, early in the spring, we, along with the VFW and the Fire Department, recognize our Officer of the Year. Unfortunately, we weren't able to coordinate that. There was an earlier date that wasn't able to be worked out with the VFW, so we're going to be doing it at City Council this year, and then we'll return to the VFW early next year for the 2022 award, so I just wanted to give a reason why it's a little bit delayed here. So each year, as I mentioned with the VFW, we present the Officer of the Year Award. And it's recognizing people, individuals in the department that go above and beyond on their daily duties to represent the city and the Police Department so well. We always have several nominations throughout the PD on all different shifts, and those nominations come from fellow officers, and why should someone be nominated? And then at a staff meeting, we discuss those nominations and come up with a finalist for that. So this year, our award recipient is Officer Alex Johnston. Little bit about Alex, he's been with the department since 2012. Started as a patrol officer, and his most recent assignment was three years with Dumegg Drug Task Force. He's been a firearms instructor, a Glock and a rifle armorer, a juvenile officer, a tactical shock and trauma instructor, and a radar and lidar instructor for the department. Very strong work ethic, works diligently to complete each case to the end, and he never hesitates to help out his coworkers when they need it and share some of the knowledge that he got, being an undercover officer because he learned so many skills in that, you know, helping other officers along, other officers along the way. So one of the big cases that I know council was made aware of back in 2021 that Alex was involved in was, we got a tip about some narcotics activity up in the industrial park. And he generated that case from a tip and developed it into a major, major case that resulted in the recovery of over ten thousand pounds of cannabis, four hundred pounds of mushrooms, an AR-15, an AK-47, the seizure of over a hundred and seven thousand dollars in cash proceeds, and eighty thousand dollars in asset forfeitures from the sale, sales of those drugs. Him and his team, they executed over sixty search warrants out of that case during the investigation with last, lasted over four months and actually is still continuing actually across the country at this time with some further ties. So based on just that case, he was awarded the Dumegg Director's Award by the Director of the Illinois State Police in November of 2021, which we were able to go down and see the award ceremony down in Peoria. So that's a really highly prestigious award that's only given to the best cases in the state. So for, you know, for all these things I've listed and Alex's efforts as a representative of the Police Department, he was chosen as our 2021 Wooddale Police Officer of the Year in conjunction with the VFW. So Alex, on behalf of the department, this award is given in recognition to, to our, for your outstanding service to the citizens of the city of Wooddale, Officer Alex Johnston. Congratulations.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmice.
I have one other item. Tonight, I have Heather Larson here from, she's the current president and CEO of Meet Chicago Northwest. As you know, Wooddale has been a member of Meet Chicago Northwest for many years now, and that is our local destination marketing organization, working with predominantly hotels and restaurants to bring visitors to Wooddale, and she has a brief presentation.
I promise to be brief. Thank you for your time. I, as Jeff mentioned, I am the president and CEO of Meet Chicago Northwest, your destination marketing organization here in Wooddale. We actually represent eight communities in the northwest suburbs, so Arlington Heights, Elk Row Village, Itasca, Rolling Meadows, Roselle, Schaumburg, Streamwood, and of course, Wooddale, everything on that northwest edge of O'Hare International Airport. And our vision is connecting the experiences of Chicago Northwest where visitors get a competitive edge. We are really an extension of your Economic Development Commission, so bringing visitors to the destination, spending money, creating tax revenue. That is what we focus on. That's what we do. The way we are funded, we get a, predominantly from the Illinois Office of Tourism. We do get a small contribution from the communities that we represent. Basically, it works out to be about forty cents for every hundred-dollar room that is booked at the hotels. You've got two beautiful properties here in Wooddale. And this is a little bit about what our budget fiscal year '23 starts for us on July 1st, just with the state of Illinois. Probably going to be a little bit less next year, given the state of things, but we're going to keep on plugging along, marketing this area. The hotels and restaurants, banquet facilities, park districts- The hotels and restaurants, banquet facilities, park districts that we work with do not pay for our services. It is all paid by a hotel sleeping room tax. The residents do not pay for our services. Basically, we have to earn it to get it, is the way it works. It's all from that sales tax that's generated. 6% is generated from the state of Illinois, goes down to Springfield, some of it comes back to us, and then of course, a little bit of the Wooddale collection on the hotels. Why is tourism important to you? Wooddale is not your typical tourism destination, nor is Elk Row Village or Itasca for that matter. For us, it's meetings and conventions, and it's business travel, and it means jobs. It means about 21,000 jobs here in the Northwest suburbs, pre-COVID, that is. We're working to get back up to that number, and quite a few more in the state of Illinois. So tourism, meetings, conventions is a big job producer for us. When these visitors come, they have dinner, they eat breakfast, they fill up their gas tanks, they go shopping, all of these good things, and they spend money, and it's a lot of money. And these are just for our eight Northwest suburbs, these numbers, the economic development. The way that we do it, we have four direct selling sales managers who are out at trade shows. We go to about 40 trade shows a year. These are trade shows for people who put on trade shows, business meetings, and conventions all over the nation. Just got banned from San Francisco yesterday, selling the Northwest suburbs to meeting planners there. We work the phones. We are very aggressive in marketing our destination to meeting planners, but then also to citizens everywhere. That means jobs, that means businesses coming to the area as well. For your two hotels, in the first 10 months of the year, or excuse me, 11, in our fiscal year, we've been able to provide your hotels with a number of opportunities totaling nearly a half a million dollars in economic impact. We've also done a, quite a bit of marketing for your organization. Because your hotels are not big convention hotels, we also market with Expedia so that you can get some of that business travel business. I skipped a little bit quick there. And we had $22,000 linked through directly from our Expedia campaign. Of course, there was quite a bit more spent on Expedia to those hotels, but we can basically show exact amounts on that campaign. We also provided 360 site tours. We couldn't get a lot of these meeting and travel professionals out here during COVID, so we, that's a camera there. What that does is the 360 tour, kind of like a Google, kind of a thing, and a number, both the hotels took advantage of it. 390 Golf took it, and yep, here's an image of that. So you can go and experience 390 Golf, and this is such a great facility for us to market to groups coming into the area who want to do an offsite, want to have a, an event of some sort. So I believe the Woodlands also took advantage of this free marketing for them. We do have a new marketing look that you see here. It's piggybacks off of the Illinois Office of Tourism, where we're talking about meeting in the middle, where you are the center of our universe. Of course, we play off of O'Hare being our, our major asset here in the Northwest suburbs. We put together a brand new website in late 2021, and we encourage not only our visitors to go there, but also our residents. We have a very robust calendar of events that markets, events at our restaurants, at our hotels, at our different facilities here in the Northwest suburbs. And if you're looking for something to do on a Friday night, please take advantage of it. We do have a community page specifically for Wooddale. You can find the hotels there, you can find all the restaurants there, you can find things to do, you can sort by cuisine, you can sort by family-friendly and that sort of thing. So please do check out our website. It's at chicago northwest dot com. Here's a, a little snapshot of those restaurants. And of course, we use social media. Now, Sherlan Lem, I think most of you know her. She is the executive director of the Wooddale Chamber of Commerce. She is also my boss. She is the chairman of the board for Meet Chicago Northwest, so making sure that this whole corridor of 390 stays relevant to us and in our marketing campaign. She's been a great leader. We do these little spotlights to showcase some of the individuals in our area. Ted is also on our Board of Directors showcasing businesses. We use search engine optimization, keywords, and all that great marketing stuff to drive people to the area. I'm not sure what I'm doing here. It's not the mic? Okay. So we love to showcase our mom and pop restaurants as well, and we got UGazdi in here, and then Salt Creek Clubhouse. So everything that we do on the blogs drives people to their website. Social media does the same. So you see our team there on the right over at the Woodlands for a little team outing and, and more. We have a packet for you in front of you. Both the maps and the visitor guides are going to be redone, so you might see a, some, as soon as you print something like this, it's out of date, but we have new maps coming with the restaurant guides within the next week or two. Visitor guides will be republished January, early January. Got a lot of events coming up. We do bring in our Economic Development Managers to help our hotels understand what's going on in the area. And I just want to leave you with this. This is the ecosystem of tourism. When we build a place where people want to visit, then we build a place where people want to live. And if they want to live here, they want to work here, and if they want to work here, they might bring their business here. And that is how we are part of your Economic Development Team, and we thank you for your support. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions, if there are any.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, on the consent agenda, we do have one item. I entertain a motion to approve. I can make this a resolution.
Do we still have to officially pull it off the agenda if I want to speak to it? Or because it's only singular, are we going to?
You want to speak to it?
Yeah.
We could leave it on. So first, we need a motion and resolution approving, authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into an agreement to purchase 23 ALPR camera systems and supporting software from Flock Safety and amount not to exceed 69,250. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'd like to amend that motion to add three caveats to that. And one is that the, the LPRs can't be installed in a manner or direction to capture driver information. That was what the company stated.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, it is. It's green.
Okay.
Two, can't be used to issue tickets. I know that that was coming up, but that isn't going to be part of the software. I'll have to say I'm not on board if we're going to have 28 cameras writing tickets, so I just wanted that to be in there. And thirdly, data retention can't exceed 30 days unless part of an active case. I believe 30 days was the amount that they stated. And just for, could I ask the chief one question? Is the?
Go ahead.
Is, is the 30 days static or dynamic? Is it a rolling 30 days? Like the 31st day falls off? Because I know it captures.
Yeah, that's correct. Once it's been in there for 30 days, it, it'll drop off a day at a time.
The 31st day would fall off?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my motion with those three amendments, that the second or?
Second, it was.
I agree.
And Mr. Brown is telling me that should be already in the contract, but it's okay to put it down.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. Okay, and that passes. Next, community chairman reports planning and zoning on our woods.
I have one report, Mayor. A redevelopment agreement between the city of Wooddale and Wooddale Residential Development LLC.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
If I could, we got it, the agreement you've been provided, it's, it's got essentially the same as what we had before with some modifications. I would just make that subject to final attorney review and approval.
Well, I'll make, make it, make the motion to approve subject to final attorney approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, Public Works, Alderman Messina.
What about planning, zoning, and building?
We just did that.
Oh, I thought it was my head. All right. One report, a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Wooddale and gen power for Prairie Fest power equipment rental on an amount not to exceed 12,525. That is my motion.
Second.
Any comments, questions, or corrections? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes. I can include your report. Thank you. Planets Administration, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Approval of a payment to GHC Mechanical, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $11,556.24. That is my motion.
Second.
My motion is second. Comments, questions, corrections? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes. Next, other business, nothing this evening on airport noise and stormwater commission other than under the airport noise, we have that FAA review going on right now, so if you haven't looked at the website, please do so. Next, approval list of bills, Alderman Catalano?
Mayor.
Sorry. Alderman Jacob, do you have something on the airport?
Well, it was actually under stormwater, and I don't know if this was for the bridge or the stormwater, but by Elizabeth Drive, by the bridge, they were like lowering equipment into the water. Was that for stormwater, do we know, or was that for some kind of?
They're probably doing.
Bridge project.
For the bridge project. Mr. Murmice, you got better detail?
Yeah, no, there's ongoing surveying work out there, ongoing studies out there with HR Green leading that up, so we're kind of in the preliminary design phase for the upcoming project.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question on the.
Alderman Catalano, on the.
Airport, no, airport noise.
Good.
Are they still doing the rotation? Is that still in effect, or are they going to stop that in the future?
Well, there is a rotation, but I believe right now, they went back to the old way until they finalized the new way.
Okay.
Okay, next, approval of list of bills, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I want to entertain a motion to approve the list of bills for June 16th, 2022 for That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any cam, or any questions on any of the bills? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes. We have no executive session, no items to be referred. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Posed or adjourned?
All right, all right, all right.